Please call the order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ervey?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Stanger?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Adam Chair, we have a forum.
Okay. Approval of the journal?
I move for the approval of the journals for the meeting of September 16th, 2014, and the meeting of September 23rd, 2014.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries, the journals are approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Adam Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, second and fourth districts.
Receive file contracted amount not to exceed 969,139,40 to be awarded to Gershenson Construction Company, the lowest responsible bidder, as recommended pending federal concurrence, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
No. And Madam Chairman, if I could just state why I'm voting no. I haven't stated this for a while. This is not the low bid. This is the low bid plus five percent, and that's for any change orders that might occur in the future. My position is that we should have transparency on that, that if there are change orders that are needed, the administration should bring that in front of the council, that will put it on a public agenda, everybody will be able to see it, you don't have to go to a room somewhere in the highway department to see what the change order money was spent on. So that's why I voted no.
Motion carries. Item number two, seventh district?
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Under other communications, item number one, all districts.
Receive, file and refer to the St. Louis County auditor, and that will be the order.
Item number two, seventh district?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three?
Same motion for number three and number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, third and fifth districts?
Receive and file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, sixth district?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, fifth district?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number nine, third district?
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 10, third district?
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number 11, sixth district?
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, sixth district?
Can we go back to the other communications? Can we reopen that? I think I forgot to say receive file and the matter be held on the order of business.
On which one?
Number seven.
Number seven.
Item number 11?
Eleven?
Yeah.
Number 11 in other communications, I think I needed to say receive file.
So ordered.
Add-ons? Add-ons, item number one, sixth district?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. County Speaker Dooley?
Madam Chair, the report.
There are no reports of special events this evening, so we'll move to the public forum.
We have 11 speakers this evening.
Okay. Jen will call your name, you have three minutes to speak.
Our first speaker is Taylor Payne. Ms. Payne will be followed by William Gamblin.
She will alert you when your time is up, and then we ask you to bring your comments to a close. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Dooley, we spoke last week, and my name's Taylor Payne. I might sound a little nervous, but I'm not, I'm just speaking fast since I only have about three minutes to speak with you guys once a week. Mr. Dooley, last week you asked me to file a police report regarding my constitutional rights being violated by the St. Louis County Police Department, when they, I was shot on a side street off West Florissant, also when I, the school was raided on the church property where I was, and police officers were not wearing badges. I'd like to thank you for addressing me, because others have not. You were the first one in St. Louis County and in Ferguson County to address me and my concerns, so I'd like to thank you for that. However, I won't be filing a report for the filing reasons. I did look up to see what I would need to file, like file a police report, and I don't know the officers' badges or names. The second night at the church, they did get out of the car and approached us with automatic rifles, not the ones with the bullets, but real ones, and none of them were wearing any type of ID. I have pictures of it, and I could not find any type of way to identify them. So I'm unable to do that, and as you're probably aware, the DOJ has already told them that this practice is not okay. As of Saturday, they were still doing that. So St. Louis County, Brown, and Ferguson still weren't wearing IDs, even though I saw a letter that went to them, I believe Wednesday. Let me check my time. So that's still happening, just in case you were concerned about it. And I'm not really sure how I'm supposed to trust the police, who is still violating orders from the DOJ to investigate my complaint, so I don't feel safe in doing that, or that anything is going to become, you know, come from that. And, you know, Mr. Dooley yourself and the council have yet to even address our questions and our concerns, and you'll be out of the office soon, and how am I to have faith that you're going to see that through? Like I said, again, I do address you, like appreciate you addressing me, but no one else on this panel has done that. No one else has scheduled any kind of meetings with our community to even address our concerns, or have it outside of this county's space, and give us more than two minutes to do that. Your silence and stonewalling, all of you, is a, you know, clear indication of your involvement with the atrocities that continue in Ferguson, and your refusal to respond or acknowledge my concerns and the concerns of others, our civil rights are still being violated. So my only option is just to, you know, continue this in civil courts, and I'll continue to come, and I'll give you the opportunity to acknowledge what I'm saying until I feel satisfied with that response, until there's a meeting scheduled, possibly with the health department, that can tell me what's happening to my body from the warfare. I've never been trained in the military, so I don't know. And also, when I meet all of you in court, as well as the officers that did not have badges. So, thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Ma'am? Taylor. Who wants to ask a question?
I would suggest that you, if you have any concerns, put what you do know in writing, and we respond to that. If you have pictures of individuals, send us the pictures as well.
Mr. Dooley?
I'm just saying, if you want to go on the record, if you indicated that no one's responding, I cannot respond unless I have something in writing, and I can respond for your particular concerns.
Well, thank you for telling us that, because this is my third meeting that I've addressed, and I was never told that before.
I think I said the last.
No, you wanted me to CC you on the police report last time.
Make a police report, but what I'm saying to you is that if it's important to you, put all that you know in writing.
So coming to speak before and asking for a meeting?
Again, put what you want in writing so you can respond likewise, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is William Gamblin. We don't have an easily accessible handheld microphone, but we can move the microphone down.
Hello, my name is William Gamblin, and I am a minister in my church, and I am an activist in the community. I have an advocate group, and its name is the Association of Spanish Lake Advocates. We worked on the McDonald's that is under construction currently in Florissant, Missouri, and I wrote two letters in order that happened. We went to the Kentucky Fried Chicken in Spanish Lake. I couldn't get into the establishment because of barricades, and we are going to explain. First, it is a big step in front of the entrance barring me from going into the establishment. Plus, I couldn't have moved inside of the restaurant because its narrowness, the American Disability Act has been since 1990, but the establishments, like restaurants, do not care the disabled or the American Disability Act. We are working on the sidewalks in Spanish Lake because either they are broken up or they are not any for. An example, take Spanish Lake Road, and we have to take the road to go the Spanish Lake Park. It is so dangerous going to the park, and I have to get my medicine at Walgreen on Parker and Lusher. I have to go in the street because the sidewalk is so broken up on the right side of Parker, going south. The other side of the street doesn't have a sidewalk at all. Now, the county has money because Ferguson had tear gas to spread on the innocent people who were protesting Muggle Brown's killing, but when people were looting the stores, the police didn't stop it, but they allowed the looting to go un. The Bible says it will be a time that people will call right things wrong and the wrong things right. This is the time we are living in because things are so corrupted. That is all I had to say.
The next speaker will be Molly Greider.
Last Thursday, there was a candlelight vigil across the street from the police station. Then there was a protest, basically on the sidewalk in front of the police station in Ferguson. Chief Jackson came out, people asked him to march with us, he said he would. He didn't give any instructions to his men at first, men and women, his officers. People started to march. If this, if you guys are the sidewalk in front of the police station, I'm where he was, right now. I was down there. I had to wait for people to pass me in order to join the march. Chief Jackson turned around and said, "Stand down." People started to march, they got maybe 30 feet, they weren't even all the way past me, before an officer from the Ferguson Police Department rushed the crowd from behind. He grabbed people, he began beating an 18-year-old boy. Other officers followed him, many of them in riot gear. They rushed this crowd from behind. The news will tell you, and Ron Johnson told you, that this was because we were pushing and shoving. There is video evidence that shows otherwise. I suggest you look for some of that. These officers beat not only an 18-year-old boy, but a couple of women, and some other men as well. People were screaming. It was the worst thing I have ever seen. It was worse than being tear gassed, it was worse than seeing people shot with rubber bullets, it was worse than seeing people die. I didn't see people die in Ferguson, I've seen people die other times. It was absolutely disgusting and horrific to watch these animals that we've given guns to attack innocent people who were not doing anything. The next day, I picked up that 18-year-old boy from the hospital, where he was finally allowed to go, when Saint Anne Police let him go. Ferguson Police were not going to take him after they hurt him. He had side of his face swollen, his wrists were so swollen and cut up from the zip ties they used on him, and had to call EMTs to cut off, that they are still now, days later, swollen. He has a cut on his back, a cut on his forehead, bruises up and down his back from this officer, who was probably twice his size attacking him. People like to say that 18-year-old black boys are men. This is not a man. This was a kid that a police officer attacked. Other police officers hit live streamers and the assistant to a local politician with batons, for no reason. And then they laughed at us when we screamed at them and begged them to stop. You guys are not the police board, we all know that, but you can do something, you can say something, and you're not. Your silence is consent to this. I beg you to think of your children, to think of your brothers. This is not okay. It's not okay that they did this, and it's not okay that they want to keep doing it. The last thing I have to say is that another police officer will hurt that 18-year-old boy over my dead body, and the headline the next day will read, "Ferguson Police Beat White Woman to Death." Is that what you want? I suggest you speak out and try to stop it. It's not okay at all.
Next speaker is Patty Cantor. Patty Cantor?
I'm Patty Cantor, and I'm back. I was on vacation last week, I'll be here again next week. I don't want to be out of town again until November. I have come here to provide my thoughts, can, well, it doesn't matter, about the point of view to North County, which are completely different than many people in this room. The support of my friends and my family haven't wavered. We support the law, and we support the people that uphold the law and the law enforcement officers. Just like any person that is presumed innocent until proven guilty, our law enforcement officers. Shut up. Excuse me, I shouldn't have said that. You need to be saying that.
You need to speak to us, not to the audience.
You're right, you're absolutely right. I'm so sorry. I lost my focus. I, just with the circus in town all the time, I'm a little tired, I'm a little grumpy.
A lot of people add to that, just stay on track, and we'll.
Thank, and I do thank you for your kindness, thank you. Our law enforcement officers are exhausted. Gunshots rang out at 11:25 PM last night while police were supervising the crazies in the middle of the street. I watched it live on my computer, several of the protesters yelled, "It isn't us shooting, it isn't us shooting." Well, that's a relief, it wasn't them shooting, but somebody's shooting at the police. At midnight, Officer Hugathug Johnson stood in the middle of the street and told the crazies that he agreed with them. He wants to talk to them, in the middle of the street at midnight. Maybe he could find a better place and time, just a thought. Next, the protesters sat down in the middle of the road, they screamed, "No negotiations," they screamed, "Shut it down." They kept screaming, and screaming, and screaming. And what is it getting them? Sore throats, for one, and other than that, I don't have a clue, because it hasn't gotten them anything. Grown people with little children are standing in the middle of the street, stopping traffic, screaming, chanting, cursing, every night. We're calling DFS. That is no place for those children to be. They demand justice. Well, I would love for them to get justice. As a law-abiding citizen, I don't understand why they haven't received justice yet. And what is justice for them? A justice for them is arrest them, charge them, and keep them locked up until a judge releases them. That is justice for breaking the law. As far as the IDs for the police, God help them if they have an ID. A badge, fine, sure, take their name, then you can threaten them, like you've threatened Darren Wilson and his family. I don't want to see one police officer with a name badge on when he's out on the streets in that crazy place. That just isn't, and I have watched it, I would go there for a million dollars. I have watched it, and it's very sad. And I'll be back next week, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Moore. Mark Moore?
If you, if you, if you all are gonna. I'm sorry. No, that's okay, you're fine.
Sir, could you spell your name for us, we can't.
Yeah, it's L-O-E-H-R-E-R. Now, are you gonna follow me home or something?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. I just want to say I voted for you, and I remember you back when the winter storm came, and you were out there helping people on the ground, and in the summer storm, you were helping people on the ground. I don't see Stanger will ever do that, go up North County yet, you know what I mean. Anyway, okay, today is September 30th, which means it's quota day, and if you laugh at me about that, you don't know what you're talking about. Quota day is the day where all the North County cops line up along 170, and they pull over UMSO students, and they pull over anybody who happens to drive by them. And I'm serious about this, it's gone on for four years now, at least I've seen it. It used to go on, and my mom used to talk about it all the time, she's like, "Just take the Metro Linker, or else you'll be pulled over." It's quota day, and it's quota day today. I saw two Villanore cops today on the way to school. That's fine, I'm used to it, I know how to slow down before St. Charles Rock Road, I can get around it. But that's, that can't be tolerable. I keep hearing talk in the Post Dispatch about, "Well, we're gonna, we're gonna change the way the tax structure works, where you don't get revenues tickets anymore." You gotta do it, you gotta do it, it's getting maddening. Second part, coming home today, coming here, thinking about what I was gonna talk about, little did I know, I forgot, it's quota day again. Four charlac cops, four of them, within 50 feet of one another, were sitting there on the side of the highway. I look in my rearview mirror, one of them takes off, tapes the guy right behind me. He was tailgating me, thank God, but anyway, doesn't matter, four cops, charlac, dissolve these municipalities, please, take them away. Terrence Jones, who's my professor, taught me that, you know, for St. Louis to move forward, we're gonna have to think more regionally. Regionally, we're gonna have to cooperate with the city, that's great, dissolve these municipalities, St. George Charlac, please, just take it away. It's not doing anything for anybody. Thank you.
Next speaker is Umar Lee. Umar Lee?
Since I, my time is brief, I'll try to be as quick as possible. We know this is not the police board, but like other people have stated, last Thursday night, we witnessed the pure brutality of not only the Ferguson Police Department, but of the St. Louis County Police Department. So while you may not be able to pass anything immediately that will affect this behavior, you could certainly pass a resolution condemning the brutality we saw last Thursday night, and the continued brutality against protesters. Now, the Darren Wilson supporter who stood up, who like the other Darren Wilson supporters, you don't see them in Ferguson, you see them online, but they don't take it to Ferguson. The same cowardice that they show with fake names on Twitter, they're hiding behind fake names, like people hid behind Klan robes, they're hiding behind fake names, like the officers are not wearing their badges. You can pass a resolution condemning the brutality of the police, not just the Ferguson PD, but the St. Louis County PD. And specifically, I want to say this about the St. Louis County PD. I was one of those people arrested last Thursday night, charged with false charges, and we gotta realize for many police, lies and deception are a way of life, because one puts the lie, the others co-sign it, the judge takes their side, people end up in jail. But with live streaming and video, those days of lying are close to being over. So I want to tell you, county officers in the building, business as usual, the internet, live streaming, that's over, okay? The Brown gang is just another gang in St. Louis County. You got the Bloods, the Crips, and you got County Brown. I also want to say this, as I was being taken away by St. Louis County, not Ferguson PD, but St. Louis County, the yelling Islamophobic slurs at me, talking about they're gonna feed me a ham sandwich, they're gonna give me some bacon in the morning, this is Umar Lee giving them special treatment, and we know they just talking stuff because they're hiding behind a badge and a gun. They probably got robbed of the lunch money in school, and still dealing with those issues. They probably got robbed of the lunch money in school and still dealing with those issues. But we have a culture of brutality in the St. Louis County Police Department. And if you don't change that culture, and if the elected officials don't work to change that culture, you're gonna see incidents like this happening over and over again. And when it blows up all the way, the blood will not only be on the hands of the police department, it will be on the hands of those elected officials, including elected officials who like those police donations, who like those police endorsements. Do you like those donations more, or do you like justice more? That's gonna be the question. Pass a resolution condemning the brutality of the St. Louis County Police Department.
Next speaker is Adonis Reddick. Adonis Reddick?
I work with the Chuck E. Gellman, and he has hired me to do more. What I'm seeing and wondering is that, so, and what, because if we kill somebody, now what we have against what's it, okay, and prove that we did it for a reason? And we can listen to his testimony because he is protected by law. So we have no idea what he said. We are just going by what people say. Say it again. I work here and tell all the components that can't be changed. What we can do now is a fit. What can we do for that fit? That man, but tomorrow, that about tomorrow, because that has to change. Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan. Tom Sullivan?
Madam Chair, members of the council, it was twenty years ago this month that the Metropolitan Sewer District was sending out letters to St. Louis County residents telling them there was little they could do to help with their stormwater problems. This was after the residents attended meetings of the County Council Stormwater Committee. The committee was formed by the council after receiving all kinds of complaints from residents after some heavy rains. The common theme MSD was not helping them with their problems. Despite twenty years now having gone by, MSD has made virtually no progress. In 2007, the MSD Board, made up of members appointed by Charlie Dooley and Francis Slay, enacted stormwater charges without voter approval. A previous board had determined this was unlawful, and many people also told the board it was unlawful, but they went ahead anyway. Last year, the Missouri Supreme Court unanimously ruled the charges were not lawful. It cost MSD more than $6 million in legal fees. MSD is now considering how to come up with funding to address stormwater problems. This would be an opportune time for this council to get involved and reestablish a stormwater committee, perhaps as a committee of the whole. You can hold hearings and invite MSD officials, elected officials, and citizens. As I don't have to tell you, stormwater is a huge problem in the county, but the needs of area residents are mostly ignored. In this year's MSD budget, there are $6.7 million in stormwater projects to meet a one to one and a half billion dollar problem. Less than one percent of the needs are being met. If residents with stormwater problems can just hang on for a hundred years or so, MSD might be able to get to them. Members of this council certainly know the severity of the stormwater flooding and erosion problems. As a University City resident, Mrs. Erby, you know all about flooding, mainly due to the River DePere. They have gone on for decades, and MSD does nothing. In 2008, two senior citizens in University City drowned when swept away in a flash flood. Not a very pleasant way to die. Last year, Councilman Dolan attended a meeting in University City, having to do with all the flooding problems the city had after a lot of rainfall. He got firsthand experience of MSD's indifference. MSD's executive director, the completely inept Brian Holshar, said the sewer district can't do much to help. He even told residents they should take care of River DePere maintenance themselves. It's because of this kind of attitude that the stormwater committee should be reestablished. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tony Grasso.
I guess my day of graduated from high school. I have an LLM in taxation. And really, I haven't seen this many police officers since the last time they were told to arrest me. The White House may have better security than the county jail. I described the security breach involving my visitor when I was a prisoner to Mrs. Reddington and others. However, jailhouse security was adequate when I was meeting with my fellow prisoners as their attorney. I advised the State Tax Commission of the following misclassified agricultural properties. Grasso County Park, eighty acres. Sold for $10 million. Real estate tax in the year of sale, $396.11. The Grants Farm Manor frontage, the library deal, four acres. Sale price, $2.9 million. Real estate tax, about sixteen bucks. I advised the State Tax Commission of the following properties that may be misclassified agricultural. Grants Farm in Afton, owned by the Bush family, 190 acres. Hunter Farm, 13,000 block of Ladue Road, about 230 acres, owned by the Brier family. I'm gonna use a pyramid scheme to advise county residents of the above. And one of the first residents I'm gonna advise is Mrs. Rumsa. She was cited in Sunday's Post-Dispatch business section. The Rumsas lived right down the street from us growing up. I guess, I'm sure they're still there. Very modest home, modest family life. I'll bet Mr. and Mrs. Rumsa never knew that their Grasso family neighbors right down Union Road were paying 400 bucks on a piece of property that we sold to the largest home builder in Missouri for almost $10 million, and I leased it to you for thirty years. Response to the gentleman in the wheelchair, didn't you pay Fox and Co. for a sidewalk survey a couple of years ago for ADA compliance? Because I remember bringing up a couple of sidewalk situations that I don't think were ADA compliant right by my old office. One, do I still have some time? I was in Waterloo, Illinois, Lily White community, right? Just across the river. Yet on Saturday evening, at about 6:00 PM, three black guys were on the corner, standing on the corner. They were shaking everyone's hand. Everyone there was white. They were shaking everyone's hand, smiling, exchanging pleasantries. These weren't African-Americans. These were Africans. The three Nigerian priests assigned to the outpost, the Catholic Church, St. Peter and Paul, in Waterloo, certainly an outpost from their home country. And I saw that. And it was very heartening in one respect to see that, to see that relationship. But then I thought, you know, would it be different if these three black guys weren't wearing their Catholic priest vestments and they were standing on another corner somewhere else? Thank you.
Next speaker is Scotty Addison. Good evening.
My name is Scott Addison. I'm here speaking for an organization called PCU Free Assembly Project, which has been doing First Amendment support work around the country for about twenty years. And I live in Riverview. I live in North County, about three miles from Ground Zero. And I was shocked that this crisis in Ferguson landed in my lap. There are two tragedies in Ferguson, and I'm not here to feed you more platitudes or expletives. I'm trying to talk about some real issues of civic governance and democracy. There are two tragedies, of course. One with the pointless death of Michael Brown. And I'm not gonna belabor that. It's shocking, and all I can say is, if deadly force was that cop's only option, he was either too stupid or untrained or trained that way. And that is not an acceptable outcome. Cops need to be held to the highest standard of public conduct, not the lowest they can get away with. The other tragedy, of course, witnessed by the world were attacks on public speech on American streets, where the police looked more like the Soviet Army hitting Budapest in 1956. And these abuses continue. The big question on a lot of people's minds is who's making these decisions? How is this stuff decided? What is the policy toward First Amendment exercise in this country anymore? I have something of an answer. From our experience with speech events around the country, nationally and federal lands, there's a magic word, a couple of magic words that explain a lot. Incident command. You saw the incident command vehicles out at the parking lot at Lucas Hunt and West Florissant. That signifies a unified command response to what is deemed an emergency. And in the course of, because we've had experience with it, with incident command in the woods, they've been hitting the Rainbow Gatherings with the feds for about twenty, twenty-odd years. We call them Incident Creation Team because every time they show up, stuff happens. And, and there's a delegation of authority from a civilian supervisor of the force to a US Special Agent who becomes the incident commander, exercising administrative authority, taking civilian policy away and putting it in the hands of cops. That's what's going on federally. The same infrastructure's been passed down to the local level and is operating here. In the course of my research, well, it didn't take long. I came up with what I believe to be the Rosetta Stone to this whole crisis.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
I will need one more minute, if you please. It's called the St. Louis County Basic Emergency Operations Plan. It was prepared by the St. Louis County Police Department Office of Emergency Management, January 2006. And this explains a lot in terms of bringing all county agencies and municipalities under a unified command in the incident of an emergency, which started out in being forest fires in the national forests, and now all kinds of emergencies under this. And there's an interesting thing. There's, the contents explain a lot about how all these agencies are brought together. There's an interesting graphic on page 111, which shows the electric and the county prosecutor attorney, county executive, and county council at the top, and at the bottom here, the police, chief of police, and the director of emergency management. But the rate really works is the other way around. This chart is really upside down because what's really explained is the fact that the police chief and the Office of Emergency Management under the police chief basically have their thumbs in every element of emergency operations.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, I will. So we've seen that this stuff got escalated as an emergency. And I know, kind of schooled in the tactics of provocation and escalation that police use. There's another document attached to the emergency operations plan.
You have twenty seconds.
Okay. It's St. Louis County Ordinance Number 701-200. Mutual Cooperation for Peace Conservation. It's the riot act, and I'm gonna read you your riot act. "The superintendent of the Department of Police in St. Louis County, Missouri, is authorized and directed to dispatch men and equipment to render mutual aid to any city, town, or village located with St. Louis County and the city of St. Louis for the purpose of quelling and suppressing assaults and batteries, riots, routs, and affrays, and insurrections, and conserving the peace in St. Louis County or the city of St. Louis."
Sir, thank, thank you.
Well, I have one more thing to say.
No. If you could give us a copy of that, we would appreciate it.
I will give you a copy of this. That was my intent. I just want to announce that I've made two Sunshine Act requests, one to the county executive today and one to the police department about their, the emergency response stuff. And I'm gonna call for the repeal of Ordinance 701-200. Would you mind, Madam?
Excuse me? Please stop.
Well, I'd like to pass this on. And, and we're gonna call for the repeal of that order.
Next speaker is Phil Duval. If she decides to do that again, could you ask her to please leave? Thank you. Phil Duval?
Thank you. I'll be referencing an article from the Post-Dispatch. It was on September 24th, I believe. "The opposite of courage is not cowardice, but it's possibly worse, and that is indifference. And indifference to evil is more envidious than evil itself, precisely because indifference to evil appears to be contagious. As we wait for the grand jury's decision, it appears there's still a great divide in our city. And I want to make note why we're so impatient. In 2000, Jack-in-the-Box shooting took about three months before a jury came back with the decision. 2001, the shooting involved Annette Green approximately three or four months. So that's why I guess some of us remember history, we're waiting patiently for this decision. It appears this divide in our city reminds me of the Curran Commission that saw forty years ago when they said that this nation was moving towards two Americas, one black, one white, separate and unequal. The Curran Commission revisited its findings 25 years later and saw that America was worse today than it was in the time of Martin Luther King Jr. There are still two Americas, one black, one white, separate and unequal. Please don't quote to me because we have a black president. All things are good. Look at the stalemate between Mitch McConnell and that aisle doesn't allow the president to govern. I look at Mr. Dooley. We respect you as county executive, but we see the same gridlock appears to be with the same imagery. Why do we demonstrate in protest? Because there's a structural malfunction in this city and in America. It started with the structure of the Constitution when we were referred to as three-fifths of a human being. Why do we march? Because our babies die sooner. Why do we march? Because we're less able to get a primary or secondary education. We have failed public school policies with economic formulas that work against us. Why do we march? Because the media stereotypes us. They project us as less intelligent than we are, less hardworking than we are. They project us as less universal than we are, less patriotic than we are until it's time for war. Why do we march? Because they say we are more violent than we are. We are more or less to borrow money because we're trapped in second-class schools and in first-class jails. Go next door. See how many black and brown faces proportionately are sitting in that jail. Go back and hammer out a compromise on the Minority Inclusion Bill. I say a compromise. Go back, revisit the numbers, and come back with a Minority Inclusion Bill. You can do it because we have some confidence that you can do it. I realize that this could be a pivotal point.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. I'll honor that wish. Thank you very much. My comments are on record.
That was the last two. That's the last. I couldn't hear you, Jen. That's the last one. Okay. Introduction of bills. Bill Number 224, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance amending Chapter 502, Title V, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, as amended, levying a collection of taxes by repealing and reenacting Section 502.090 pertaining to authorization of contracts with municipalities. Bill Number 225, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri, to issue its tax... Page, and ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Davidson Surface slash Air Inc. project, Series 2014, in a principal amount not to exceed $10 million, for the purpose of providing funds to pay at the cost of an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Bill Number 226, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps, by changing the boundaries of the R3 Residence District, the FPR3 Flood Plane Residence District, the NU Non-Urban District, and the FPNU Flood Plane Non-Urban District, as provided herein, TC13-14, St. Louis County Planning Commission. Bill Number 227, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, and ordinance denying a request to change the boundaries of the R6 AA Residence District and the R2 Residence District, PC19-14, St. Louis County Planning Commission. Bill Number 228, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, and ordinance authorizing and giving preliminary approval to a planned environment unit development of attractive land located in the R6 AA Residence District, subject to conditions, PC20-14, Vera Land Company LLC. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you.
Perfecting the bills.
Bill Number 8, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill Number 69, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
Hold, and that will be the order.
Bill Number 215, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
Move for perfection of Bill Number 215.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 215 is perfected.
Bill Number 216, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 216.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 216 is perfected.
Bill Number 217, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 217.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 217 is perfected.
Bill Number 218, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for perfection of Bill...
Madam Chair, I move to hold on the order of business and move to the committee of the whole. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 218 is perfected. I'm sorry. It's gonna go to the committee of the whole.
Thank you.
And Jen, you can schedule that.
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 219, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I move to perfect Bill Number 219. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 219 is perfected.
Bill Number 220, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I move to perfect Bill 220. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 220 is perfected.
Bill Number 221, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 221.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 221 is perfected.
Bill Number 222, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 222.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 222 is perfected.
Bill Number 223, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 223.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 223 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill Number 209, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
Oh, you're not gonna do 20?
We don't have all seven councilmembers, Madam Chair.
Oh, that's right. I forgot my mic's on. Okay.
I'd like to take it up, and I move final passage of Bill Number 209.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 209, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 209 is finally passed.
Bill Number 211, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 211.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 211, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 211 is finally passed.
Bill Number 212, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 212.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 212, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 212 is finally passed.
Bill Number 213, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 213.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 213, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 213 is finally passed.
Madam Chair, moving on to resolutions. We have five this evening.
I move for adoption of all five resolutions. They're honorary resolutions honoring various individuals in our community, down in the sixth district.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolutions 1 through 5, there are six ayes and one absent.
Resolutions Number 1 through 5 are adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Madam Chair. Item Number 1, Fourth District.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item Number 2, Fifth District.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Madam Chair, we have two prepared orders this evening under New District.
Move for adoption of Orders Number 1 and Number 2. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Orders Number 1 and 2 are adopted.
Move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move is adjourned.